We are very careful, and we have been extremely cautious in the hiring of our staff. And we would not, we would hire staff who have backgrounds in working with young men versus young women, so that the staff is equipped to deal with the differences in, what differences there may be in teen boys versus teen girls. We do intend to hire primarily male staff. We've actually received several applications already from individuals who have a heart and a passion for working with teen boys, and have a background that would give them the expertise, so to speak, in working. If any of us can ever be an expert in how to deal with a child, because each child is individual, fearfully and wonderfully made, and we have to look at each individual. So I would say that the challenge is going to be, as it is with the girls, is finding the right staff that have the training, and the tools, and actually the personal relationship with Christ, to be able to minister to these boys. So I don't know if that answers your question, Jean. I can digest it further if you'd like.
That's good, thanks.
Is that okay?
Krishna Kersky.
A couple of questions. Who's gonna have the title or deed to this property?
Hope Harbor. Hope Harbor is...
503 C.
501 C3 Corporation.
501 C3, I'm sorry, yeah. So they will have the actual, okay. And describe, I was trying to get online and look, but it looks like in Marshall, you're in town, is Winona in town also?
Yes.
So this is kind of a different setting for you.
It is, and partially that's because of, in response to Commissioner Bender's question, we just feel boys need more space, you know, and maybe that's not true, but we'd like to provide more space for them. We're able to, and we're limited to six girls in both of our sites. We cannot, and there is no room for expansion, which is why, and also with the three-hour radius, which is why we chose to do our second expansion in a different part of the state. However, it's costly to do off-site different expansions. It's owning more homes, it's more difficult to do, and that's why we wanted a larger piece of property here, so that we could expand here if the need dictates it. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Kersky?
Okay. Thank you, Claudia.
Okay.
Mr. Lemme.
My name is Dan Lemme, and I live at 45245 South Dakota Highway 34 in Madison, South Dakota. And what my role in this is to help the organization build the proper, property according to codes, regulations, things like that, so. And then also, I have a heart for wanting to help these kids and their families. I stated at the neighborhood meeting that I taught Sunday School for 35 years, and three kids in that time have committed suicide, and it's kind of like, what didn't I do to stop that? Same thing as what happened down in Florida. Everybody's looking at gun laws and things like that, and it's like, what do we do? It starts right here. It starts in our neighborhood. It starts with our families. If we can take these kids and keep them from hurting themselves or hurting others, that's where it starts, so. But anyway, going back to the building part of this, this is a perfect location. They have two facilities right now in town, but their desire would be out, to be out in the country. And the reason for that is that the town has a lot of distractions, noise, friends driving by in their car, and honking horns, and things like that, whereas if we're out in the country, we feel a little bit more isolated, where that would work better for the facility. Also, like Claudia said, it does provide more room for expansion, especially with the boys, and that they can be out there. We plan to have a pond where they can do some fishing, you know, of course, they're gonna have to take care of the property. And then this, this location too, is absolutely a perfect location, because it's close to town. And we need a lot of assistance from Sioux Falls Christian, from different organizations, different churches, to come out and help with these kids, to train them, to mentor to them, things like that. So in Lincoln County, we were turned down, down there, and one of the commissioners made the comment that there was some land, I think it was out by Pine Ridge or something like that, it's like, that doesn't work, you know. And the thing that's disappointing in Lincoln County, when we got turned down, was that they said, "Not in our backyard." They said, "We think you've got a better location." So now we're here at Minnehaha County, and let's say we get turned down, we go to Turner County, and then we go to Lincoln County, I think everybody is gonna say that there's a better location. We feel that this is the location that is prime for this school to be here, this training facility. It also is donated ground. That property, we purchased that property, Har &amp; Lemme Development, purchased that property from Dwayne Spader a number of years ago. We went to the city of Crooks and asked if we could annex that property, and then develop homes out there, and the city of Crooks said they had no interest in that. So what we did is, we went back and said, "It's not gonna work." So we abandoned that thought, and then Jack Har purchased that property from Har &amp; Lemme Development. So that, and since then, Jack has passed away, and he's, he put that land into his trust before he passed away. So that land is not something that Har &amp; Lemme has any plans for development for. I know that's been said by different people. We have no plans. We sold the property. It's something that we have no interest in. It's farmland right now. That, the Har family has done so much. They donated the land for Sioux Falls Christian. They've done so much in this community, mostly things that people don't even know about. So anyway, they donated this land, or will donate this land, if we can get the approval for it. So that's a huge deal. Our foundation, our Christian foundation, is also donating $300,000 for this project. I'm donating the labor and time and skills to build this facility for them. This is a very well-planned, very well-funded ministry that we're trying to put together here, but we need help to get it done. You know, Edmund Burke said that. He said, "All that's necessary for evil to triumph is for good men to do nothing." So these people are pouring their hearts, their soul, their time, their money into this, and we're not asking any money from the county or anything else. We hope to save the county money, and we hope to save kids. But the other thing is that, and Claudia said this, we're gonna create jobs. You represent the whole county, and this is a good thing for the county. For the, it's a good thing for the kids, that we can hopefully keep them out of the criminal justice system. It's a good thing for the taxpayers, because we'll be creating jobs and creating revenue. The, we also believe that this is a totally acceptable right that you have, of course, to give us the authority to put this on here, this property. You know, we've met all the legal requirements of it. PDs are, I think there's, what, 14 PDs in Minnehaha County, I believe? So anyway, let's see, what else was it? Oh, well, of course, the staff approved it, and the planning approved it, and we're asking for your approval, but anyway, as far as the regulations, Eric Willitsen will address that in our engineering, as far as the septic systems, the water system, the floodplain area, access to this property, so he'll address that.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Lemme at this point? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Willitsen, are you speaking now?
Good morning. Eric Willitsen, Willitsen on Engineering, 902 South Cleveland, here in Sioux Falls. For the record, I am a licensed professional engineer in South Dakota. Hope Harbor approached me and Dan to address any engineering concerns that may impact the project. I guess from an engineering perspective, on the feasibility of the site, as you've been informed already, it is located on highway, County Highway 130. Their sketch plan for the project puts the access off of 469th Avenue. As Brian indicated, it is adjacent to Willow Creek on the north and west sides. That is identified as a special flood hazard area by FEMA, and there is a FEMA flood zone identified on Willow Creek. I do have a copy of it, if you'd like to see it. A portion of the flood zone, and it is a Zone A, does cross into where this property and the development is located, as they indicated. It's 14 acres, and there is still ample property that is out of the floodplain, to be able to construct the three houses with a minimum of an acre for each one of them. Because it's located in that vicinity of the creek, I don't anticipate there would be any drainage issues from this type of a use, essentially a single-family rural residential in that proximity, so I don't think any upstream or downstream properties would be affected. As far as wastewater's concerned, would utilize onsite, single-family type wastewater treatment, likely consisting of a septic tank and a drain field. Certainly a percolation test would be required. And I guess it would be up to you if you would prefer, if the system were designed by an engineer. Currently, county regulations don't require that. Water service is available from Minnehaha County water, real water, and I guess as far as that's concerned, I don't see any, there's gonna be real minimal engineering involved, since it's just a single-family. I don't know if staff, maybe they can address that, if they're gonna require preliminary subdivision plan. I don't anticipate there's any private roads to the facility, so I'm not sure what type of engineering in addition to just a site plan and the septic system design would be required by the county in order to secure a building permit for the project. So with that, from an engineering perspective, if there's any questions about the feasibility of the site, or this to be located here...
Can I see your map?
Be happy to address.
Can I see the flood map?
Sure.
Additional questions? Well, Commissioner Bender, while he's getting that ready, or?
I know the issue of septic was an issue at the planning commission meeting, and I just am curious, with the floodplain and the septic, if, from your professional opinion as an engineer, is that something we should be concerned about, to add three septic systems right there by the creek and in the floodplain?
No, I don't think there's any concern. Obviously, it would have to pass the required percolation testing, but if that were passed, certainly a septic system in the proximity of the creek is not a problem. They do, there is a requirement on the distance of the drain field from that creek is 100 feet. There are other requirements for locating distances from pressurized water lines, from wells. Certainly, there's room on the property to locate a drain field, so it would not impact the waterway.
Krishna Kersky.
Okay, so just looking at the Zone A flood zone there, I imagine that's the blue portion, correct?
It is, it is. And you can kind of see from the line that runs northeast to southwest, and then back again, that's essentially the, what the site plan depicted, so there is a portion of the property on that west side that is within that Zone A. Now, to be clear, Zone A is a flood zone that does not have a study associated with it, so base flood elevation has not been established by study and a profile for this area, so an engineer would have to use the methodology available to determine what the base flood elevation is at this location, and then set the elevation of the homes or the buildings accordingly. I think the county requires a two-foot above base flood in this situation on the property. Being in a flood zone, I would assume that Scott would require an elevation certificate by an engineer or land surveyor as well.
So let's talk a little bit about that. So an elevation certificate would be required to build, because you're post-firm, basically. Flood insurance rate map was established, I don't know what year. So in order to build, you would need a, to determine the base flood elevation, and you would have to have an elevation certificate, and probably, as you're saying, to be able to build, build above that base flood elevation, for whatever standard there is. Is there a standard?
Well, they would need to obtain a floodplain development permit, and our flood ordinance requires all the structures to be constructed at or above the floodplain. There is no two-foot freeboard, as Eric had indicated, so you can build right at the floodplain.
What about a septic system? Do they have to be built, where?
Pardon me?
A septic system, how does that relate to the floodplain?
They are not allowed to build in the floodplain. They, because this would be considered what would be sort of a quasi-commercial activity. It's not as typical residential use. It would be approved by the state DNR, so they would need to submit their plans to DNR for approval. Once they get that, then they could install their septic system, so.
Looks like at least a third of the property is in the floodplain.
A third of it is, and there are methods. They, you can do what's considered a, you can do a CLOMAR based on fill, a conditional letter of map amendment, where you, there, you do, there are mechanisms that you can do some filling to sort of level that area out a little bit. And as Eric had indicated, this is an unstudied area, so once they go in and actually do the work, the study, it could vary greatly, so.
Who's "they"?
An engineer. A registered engineer would go in, do the actual...
Determine base flood.
They would determine the base flood elevation, based on the upstream, the flow. They would get, they would gather more specific information, then they could actually then model it very precisely, and where the floodplain is, and then they would submit that information to FEMA. And so first of all, they would get the floodplain development permit, which would determine the base flood elevation, and they follow, they would follow that up upon completion of the construction of the building, then they would submit us the elevation certificate that verifies the lowest, the lowest floor level is at or above that 100-year floodplain number.
The lowest floor level includes a basement.
It does.
Yes. So I mean, these are hurdles that aren't put there by us. These are federal and state requirements that they'll have to meet.
Federal.
Federal requirements, okay.
And they're not hurdles. I, you know, they're really, to the benefit of these people, because you don't want to have a $500,000 investment, and then have, you know, a major flood event come and put water in your basement.
Semantics, but thank you.
Additional questions?
I think, Dean, that's why they asked me to get involved in this early in the process, to assess this from an engineering standpoint, is this feasible location? And by every indication, from what I've looked at, it is.
Thank you. Oh, I did have one more question, I'm sorry. Private roads, it does appear that there is gonna be a road through here. Who's responsible for building, maintaining, et cetera?
From what I know about the project, they're starting out with one unit, so essentially it would be a driveway to a private residence. If they would add additional buildings, I don't know if you would put a requirement that a private road go through there to connect two or three lots together. I know the sketch plan indicates two access points. So if it were to be a private road, I would assume it would be similar to other types in the counties that would be taken care of by the owners, some type of homeowners association. In this case, Hope Harbor would be responsible for maintenance, snow removal, construction, those kinds of things.
Thank you, Mr. Willitsen. Anybody else for the proponents that would like to speak at this time? People in favor of the project? Anyone else want to speak? We have one more. Yep.
One thing, two.
You have to use a microphone, please.
Yes, I'm so sorry. I just also wanted to point out, because the architect was not here today, but there is a draft of what the home would look like, as well in front of you, so that you can kind of get a picture of the type of home that we're hoping to build in that area. It is not going to look like an institution, it is going to be a home, and look similar to that.
Thank you, Claudia. Give your name and your address, please, thank you.
Good morning. My name is David Edwards, and I'm an attorney at the Bright Law Office in Sioux Falls, and our address is 606 East Tanteras Circle. Thank you for considering this matter this morning, and thank you, Kevin, for your work on the report. I just have a few follow-up comments. The proposal meets the policies and objectives of the comprehensive plan, as was mentioned in Kevin's report. It also serves the same purpose as the public schools do, as referenced in the report. Kevin's report said, "Hope Harbor as a group home institution, organization, serves a similar purpose for the county as the schools and public institutions referenced in the comprehensive plan." Pardon me. He also stated, "The longevity of the organization minimizes the possibility that the proposed facility will not be successful in maintaining the property for its intended purpose." He stated, "The rezoning proposal generally meets the policies and objectives of the comprehensive plan. The county has supported similar type of plan development in the past, with a mix of institutional, agricultural, and dwelling uses." That was probably a reference to McCrossan's Boys Ranch, which was mentioned earlier today. That plan had a mix of commercial, with some commercial storage, and residential, and it was closer to 100 and 120 acres, obviously not all building acres. This is about 10 times bigger than the Hope Harbor project you're considering today. Hope Harbor's project is much smaller. It does not require or request commercial uses like McCrossan's Boys Ranch did. It doesn't involve horse stables, livestock, or rodeos, which McCrossan Boys Ranch did, or the associated noise and parking issues and odors. There, having a single home, or two or three, is not an offensive use, and will not create any nuisances. The testimony has been that Sioux Falls has a need for this. There isn't anything nearby like this. The nearest, similar house for boys is hundreds of miles away, and the opponents who we welcome today to speak, I think they acknowledge the need. It just comes down to, not in Lincoln County, not in Minnehaha County, put it somewhere else. And that's not always a legitimate consideration. With regard to this type of placement, your duty isn't to prefer one neighbor sitting in the rear to the other sitting in the rear, or us up front. It's to consider whether or not this is a proper use under the comprehensive plan, and consider whether the application was complete and thorough. You can also consider the negative impacts, and that's why we had the architect and engineer here today. We would like to hear the negative impacts from the opponents today, and we're hoping that they have more than just fears to offer. What are the tangible negative impacts that can be shown? Because this application is thorough and complete, that is the reason why the planning department and the planning commission approved this plan. One thing that I did notice in the planning commission's minutes, is that there were a few no votes, but the minutes lacked any description of why, which in my opinion puts our group on a little bit of a disadvantage as to why there would be no's. We've heard some questions today, I think they were answered very well, so I would keep that in mind. If we have anyone leaning no on this project, we would really like to know why. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Edwards? Is there anybody else that would like to speak on behalf of this project? Any proponents that would like to speak? Okay, then we will, at this point, go to opponents, if you want to start. People who are opposed to this... People who are opposed to this, one person at a time, to come up and give your name, address, and your comments, please.
Good morning. We are Brian and Michelle Ripentrop and we own a home at 46857-256th Street, Crook, South Dakota. I'm just going to do a quick overview on behalf of the opponent kind of group that has formed with the neighbors. We have people talking about different topics as to not overlap things. Not everybody is going to speak today. So if you have any questions, it might not be the right person, but somebody else will certainly come up and ask, ask, answer your question because they have all kind of taken their own kind of viewpoint on this to get that information complete. So, thank you again, and we're going to start with Brian with the first talk. Thank you.
Morning. I'm Brian Ripentrop. My wife and I, we've reviewed the application and attended the community meeting hosted by Hope Harbor staff on December nineteenth and have many concerns regarding the rezoning of a farm, agricultural land, and adding building eligibility to this section. The PUD needs to be analyzed as if any developer was petitioning. This petition should not be glossed over because of the possible occupant is a faith-based company. They are a developer and a for-profit business. With other PUDs, while other PUDs have been approved, the plans that were presented were drafted by an engineer, had a defined set of covenances, and had a managing board to oversee the development after the construction. The petition submitted by Crooks Investment LLC and Hope Harbor is a hand sketch and is lacking much detail. We would like first to share a comment made by Dan Lemme at the Minnehaha County Planning Commission meeting on January twentieth. As described in the meeting minutes, when addressing the issue of creating building eligibility on this property in lieu of another development route. Dan Lemme further described that the organization felt it necessary to have an exit strategy for the advent that the group home would not remain at this site. The exit strategy for the project would be to have three single-family dwellings on the property to sell. This is of great concern that Hope Harbor is already planning the most profitable way to be able to sell the structures. And when they do, this development will be unregulated with no uniform building codes. The PUD essentially requesting additional building eligibility to be allowed on this section. These additional building eligibility do not exist on the adjacent properties. In turn, increasing the planned housing density for this section. Furthermore, the current landowner is Crooks Investment LLC, not Hope Harbor, an investment company. The same property location has been, has already had a failed PUD application twice. We are greatly concerned that the landowner is using the petitioner as a stepping stone to continuing obtaining additional building eligibility for this property or land investment. This concern for larger development was brought up multiple times at the community meeting. When Mr. Lemme addressed the prior PUD statement on January twenty-second at the county commissioners' meeting, he stated there are no current plans for the remaining land. However, at the community meeting hosted at Big Earn's in December, Hope Harbor staff stated that the full development plan for this land was originally slated for commercial use, not residential. That the community should appreciate that there would be commercial at this corner, not residential. The two statements do not align. The end use of the development is also a concern. Traffic will increase more than just a single-family home. This is a business, three businesses to be exact, with two facilities and structures. In total, six facilities, twenty-seven residents, three twenty-four-hours awake staff, multiple-day staff, teachers, instructors, counselors, weekly family visits, deliveries, trash pickup, maintenance, et cetera. All of these add up. Using the ITE traffic generation trips per day, that puts this, this facility conservatively at ninety trips per day, all on a gravel road, just for one development. The habitant type, habitant type also poses security and safety challenges for the neighbors and community. These concerns could not be addressed at the community meeting and we did not see any detailed plan of action on how the staff intends to react to a security breach. The occupants at the home are voluntary and although aren't required to attend by the courts, can pose safety concerns. For instance, the miners at McCrossan Boys Ranch are mandated to stay on-site and yet they still escape the property, vandalize, and steal vehicles. This property, being at a remote country location, would experience longer response times from the sheriff and notification of a breach. It's simple geography. A miner escapes, a miner vandalizes an adjacent home, a miner steals a vehicle, or even a miner threatens to hurt themselves, or even a child, a teacher, or a counselor within the confines of development. This property is miles from the interstate, miles from law enforcement, and miles from emergency care. This should not be the burden of the county to incur additional costs and resources due to its remote location. The three ancillary Morton buildings they plan to build are stated to be used for vocational-type training, such as shop repair and woodworking. These are not risk-free teaching environments. Accidents happen. There are risks inherently associated with the type of training that are planned to provide these adolescents. Additionally, the ancillary buildings are to house school activities. These are, this is essentially a for-profit school, a boarding school. Geographically, geographical placement and program approach are allowing the school to go into a rural setting through the residential application and development plan. Because they are classifying themselves as a religious school, they essentially eliminate any regulations within the state of South Dakota. Again, if they tried to do this as a school and not under a religious school classification, we would not be here today. It would not be allowed. The Hope Harbor program also largely relies on community support and offerings. Communities that don't exist in the middle of a cornfield or in the city of Crooks. They would be driving into Sioux Falls to adjacent communities to fulfill these programmatic needs. Yet, those communities won't have the risk, the risk of minor vandalizing, vandalizing their property, the risk of decreased home values, the risk of environmental impact on Willow Creek, the risk of Crooks Investment LLC or Hope Harbor developing this agricultural land, selling, and walking away. The landowners around Crooks are generations deep. Their children and grandchildren will be there long after Hope Harbor is gone. When Hope Harbor was asked at the community meeting in December about the community involvement need and why they didn't want to locate within Sioux Falls city limits, the response was due to increased tape or regulations. It had nothing to do with the ideal location for the facility because they know that, that's, that it's not. It's opportune. They have the opportunity to receive a land donation and then instead of analyzing the location for optimal program success, they are going to become developers and have stated they intend to sell the homes as their exit strategy. If this was a perfect location, they wouldn't need an exit strategy. Hope Harbor has no track record of success in the state of South Dakota. Hope Harbor has no track record of success with a boys program. And Hope Harbor has no track record of success for a rural recovery program. A large prop, percentage of the property is also on a floodplain. A quick overlay of the concept plan shows that nearly fifty percent of the property is in the FEMA flood area and shows structures in the floodplain. Lastly, we would like to point out that Hope Harbor has also applied for PUDs in Lincoln County, which have been denied. Records can be found with both Lincoln County and the city of Harrisburg. Lincoln County has denied Hope Harbor, as well as multiple other group homes, all at various locations with different treatment strategies. Approval of this development in Minnehaha County could send an inappropriate message to other like services, like service companies looking to service Sioux Falls but don't want to be under the rules and regulations that come with being in Sioux Falls. The PUD needs to be examined for land use. A development on this section was already determined unfitting twice. The developer has also stated the exit strategy is to sell the single-family homes. The housing density will increase above Minnehaha County rural farming allowances. Traffic will increase more than a standard residential development as this is for, as this is a for-profit school business with housing on-site. And the current community cannot offer the programmatic, programmatic needs this business requires for success. We hope the commission will review the PUD for exactly what it is. Another three-unit business development wanting to increase housing densities in the rural community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ripentrop. Are there any questions for him? Mrs. Commissioner Bender?
Thank you. You, you did a really good job. I'm curious about the last statement you made and I'm curious what rules and regulations that Sioux Falls would put on this organization that won't be present in, in Minnehaha County.
I'm just going off of what they said in the meeting, that there were fewer regulations outside of the city of Sioux Falls.
Okay, so you don't, you don't know specifically?
I do not.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, anybody else for the opponents want to speak at this time? Opponents. People opposed.
I'm William Pearson. I live at 25678-465th Avenue, Hartford. Longtime resident, born and raised in the place I live. Okay, my dad used to sit on the planning and zoning board for many, many years. My concerns with this are, I'm grateful for the Lemmes to donate the land to them, but if they are really truly about their goals and looking at the floodplain map and everything else, they won't be allowed to expand. They're going to become landlocked. And in developing this, in their site plans, if you could scroll that, please, down to their drawing. Okay, they show a pond and stuff existing. That pond is in the floodplain. Okay, and knowing what's in the future of this, I first probably better back off and say, I also am an employee of the city of Crooks. I'm the building official. I'm here as a resident of the county, okay? Want that clear. There's other concerns that concern me are, one, this floodplain is going to get larger. As the city of Crooks grows, more water is going to come down through that watershed. Second thing, the city lagoons are right above this. And they're talking about using the creek and the pond or creating a pond, plus their lagoon systems. I don't know if I'd want to be out swimming in that stuff or playing in it. That is a serious health question that I have coming up. My other concern is the use of the PUD. Granted, it's for what it is, but you, I don't think you can go back and classify McCrossan's. You know, yes, they did it in two thousand and twelve or eleven, redone it and issued it as a PUD. But that isn't a guideline for this PUD. Because that was started long before PUDs were. So I don't think you can count that as apples and apples. It's an apple and orange to me. The other problem I have in it is we have two major water lines in there, close to those properties, that the setbacks are probably going to have to be back farther, which moves the property closer to that floodplain. So again, it's a restrictive use of that property and the resale of that property then becomes more harder to do. So also I see a prob, if it doesn't work or if they outgrow this and they have to go someplace else, how are you as a county going to be able to plot that out and divide it? Because in my reading of your stuff and through it, it also says accessory dwelling. Okay, you have a house and you have an accessory dwelling with a possible room of a thousand square feet of the existing. That becomes actually two residents on that property, in my mind. And how do you split that and deal with that? That's what you're going to have to look at in the future. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Pearson? Krishna Karski?
You mentioned some water line easements?
Yes, you have a major water line that just came through that goes up along the roadside there where they have their access in it. And then you have another water line on the south side of that that goes through that is a main water line for the rural water systems. The one going north is Webb. The one going that way is Minnehaha Rural Water and Webb Feeding Rural Water.
And I am curious, and I, you brought up something that I did read in here, and I don't know who can address this, but the outbuildings will have kitchen facilities and sleeping quarters. When do, Scott, when do they become a residence? I mean, how do you determine? If you can help with that. So if they have a kitchen in there and there's sleeping quarters, that type of thing, or resident-type quarters?
Typically, we consider a residence to have a kitchen and a sleeping, you know, sleeping quarters. But you can have what we would call a kitchenette, so you can have everything except a stove. So it would be like, you could have refrigerator, a microwave, a sink. Those would all be acceptable and not be considered a residence. It becomes a residence when you have a stove operating that would allow you to cook.
Question for you, sir? Scott?
Scott, Mr. Pearson has a question.
Question, Scott? Would that include the bathroom as well?
Bathrooms, you, there are many, many accessory building, farm buildings have bathrooms in them, and they're not residences.
Any additional questions for Mr. Pearson?
Commissioner Bender, you asked for regulation or what would be the difference in, in city of Sioux Falls regulations and the county regulations? I don't know how county deals with group housing, but it's a whole different set of guidelines. You know, the house, the building is built, the structures and whatnot else. You may have an R1, but there's seven groups of R1, R2, R3, and those each require different criterias when houses built. And some require sprinklings, some don't, some this. It's a long, lengthy process. That's where the rules and regulations would be different from a city and to the county separately.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, additional people that are opposed? Anyone else?
Janine Dieters and I live at 402-5774-468th Avenue. One of the things that's really important to me and a lot of the other neighbors is that the, this is a rural area and the current natural landscape of this agricultural property provides a variety of benefits through which is known as the ecosystem services. Native plants and animals utilize this space as habitat and corridors for migration. We have observed many different types of animals there because the Willow Creek is there and we've also watched a pair of eagles over the years. Recreational opportunities for hunting, fishing, and nature watching can be found along Willow Creek and the land with, within this area. And the county's comprehensive plan should assist in the orderly development of these important places of rural character. Part of the reason that we are all out there is it not only is, is beautiful and beneficial to all the neighbors, but it's beneficial to city people too, the serenity and ability to come out to the country. Rural character with its country lifestyle, natural landscape attract people that live in, in both the country and unincorporated area. However, the development of this facility threatens to diminish the very aspects of the rural character that many residents seek, the, the reason that we've come out there and lived there for years. Once farm and natural land is converted to a higher intensity uses, it's very unlikely that it'll ever return to its previous natural use. The primary tool that the Minnehaha County uses to limit the development and maintain rural density and prevent sprawl in the zoning standards. The action proposed in this petition threatens to open the door to other zoning requests and require costly extensions from rural services such as law enforcement, medical, emergency, fire department, road maintenance, expectations. Also, as a nonprofit organization, are there any taxes to assist the county in covering all these additional services to the facility? And just on a note, I thought of this as they were speaking. They're going to, one of the skills that they want to teach is oil changing for the boys and they're going to have the vocational center in one of those Morton buildings. I haven't heard anything up to this point on how are they going to discard this used oil. This is a real concern because oil can be very detrimental to our rural environment and the plants and animals that are, that are already established there. Thank you.
Are there questions for Mrs. Dieters?
Yes.
Questions?
Oh, okay, no, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Additional comments? Additional comments?
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning Tom.
Okay.
Name and address?
Oh, Tom Winterstein, and two fifty eight twenty one, four sixty ninth. And I live directly below, right south of the project there. And have for forty years or so. So the neighborhood has had many questions and concerns, and I believe, hopefully you've all received an email that we sent in on kind of a summary.
All emails that were sent have been distributed to all Commissioners. So we've seen all emails, all letters, and anything that was sent to anybody was distributed amongst all of us.
Good, that was basically our-
I would note that I got one this morning as I sat down here that I was going to disclose later, so.
But that covered a lot of our points, oppositions, and I'll try to be fairly quick and just hit a few of them, but, and then there was a number of signatures that we sent in too that probably came to you.
We got that too.
Yeah, okay. So anyway, just as summary, or who I am, I've farmed in the area, well, actually farmed there nearly a hundred, no, I haven't farmed there a hundred years, my family-
You're really old, Tom, you are really old!
Off to a good start here. Yeah, well, at least I'm aged well, you know, it's holding up. But family's farmed there for nearly a hundred years. So well acquainted with how the area has changed, and I must say that the growth has been real orderly, you know, compliment the county for, you know, their one per forty and contained growth. And in that area, it's primarily just existing farmsteads. There's a few eligibility's that have been built on and used, but not really very many, so it's fairly remote. And of course, you know, we keep drifting away from, it seems to me like it's a little bit of the cart ahead of the horse here in that, you know, the first discussion is this appropriate land use that has to be totally addressed before we get into the merit of the project. And I don't think anybody's really questioning the need for it or the merit of it. I mean, you know, that's not the point. The point is how we plan out the rest of the county, it seems like to me. So, of course, my most obvious objections, which any neighbor would have, is that it's right across the road, so decreases in my property values, safety, security of family, increased traffic, interference with our farming practices. And of course, it makes my eligibility less desirable too. But that's going to happen wherever you're at. But I guess the, what I really failed to understand is why this facility is needed in that area. You know, they related to, well, some practices, they might garden, they might grow some trees, get some chickens, whatever, but that's all activities that can be done in other areas that are not totally isolated by ag. And the unique thing about this, which seems to be dangerous to me, is that it is entirely isolated by ag. There are a number of other PD districts in the county, but they are all either adjacent to another type of zoning, non-ag zoning, or adjacent to a pre-existing development that was there early on. So it's unique in that it's going into a totally ag district and poking a hole in it for a PD, which increases the eligibility's, which changes and weakens that one per forty. And I don't see how it could not be used in the future to kind of escalate a bit of a problem there. But anyway, I digress there. If I could read my writing, that would help a lot. But anyway, something like this obviously changes the feel of the community and the ag area, et cetera, et cetera. But yeah, back to that, why it has to be this location? And of course, there's a great deal of suspicion in that both of them were against development property, both attempts against development property. And I know, you know, when that land was bought many years ago, it was at a price much higher than any of the farmers were willing to go to. And I'm sure the intent was for development, and probably having seen what happened in Lincoln County, T and Harrisburg, and the speed of the expansion down there, that the assumption was that Crooks would hit that property. It's probably three quarters of a mile away from it right now, that Crooks would hit that property and be able to develop it much sooner. And that just didn't happen, you know, Crooks grew much slower. Fortunately, Minnehaha County decided to contain their growth just to existing areas and not plopping new development out in the middle of nowhere, which was real helpful for the county, so they didn't make some mistakes that Lincoln County did. So I'm sure it's been a little frustrating waiting for that to happen. And then they point out that the land is donated, and of course, of a total project like that, that's a fairly small amount. I mean, it's significant, but for, you know, the whole build out on the thing, it's a bit of a fraction. And if the donors are, you know, truly intent on making a contribution, making something happen, just as easily to sell off some ag land and donate the cash and look for a location that does not create a problem of having a PD district that is totally isolated and unique, that doesn't buffer up against something else. You know, the PD districts generally use this kind of a transitional district between one type of zoning to another. So that just seems to me to be a kind of a big problem that might come up down the road. And of course, the facilities that they have are in towns, and they seem to function fine. And it might even be something could be said where, you know, looking for a small town or community in the area that would encourage it, that would be, you know, would join in with them, there would be some opportunities for, you know, a little bit of part-time job or learning for the boys in the neighborhood. And if they were assimilated into a small community, it seems like that might have some advantage to them as well as the community, actually. So yeah, that as far as generating the income or generating the donation, that wouldn't necessarily have to be the property, it could be cash. And I think they covered this, that they searched out other areas, I don't know how intensively that was, you know, whether it's small towns or what they did look into, it just kind of popped onto this one, it seems like. But, okay, so the biggest issue really is that I've talked to a number of, number of farmers, had a lot of calls on it, the landowners, and they are curious as to how someone can create new eligibility's. And that, of course, you know, people know those are high value item anymore, especially close to town. And if either current landowners or developers with some forethought and some planning can search out areas where they might be able to attempt something like this and apply for a PD for a charitable or noble cause or whatever, and, you know, whether it succeeds or fails, then they've still gained eligibility's, which increases the value of that asset greatly. So I just really see that as something that might come back to kind of haunt planning in the future. Now I lost my place. So yeah, that's part of it, is this real unique that it's isolated. And I think they covered the McCrossens comparison, which was fairly weak as far as saying that there is an existing facility, but like I said, you know, that was back in the fifties or whatever, so you really can't compare that. I think a lot of this has been said already. And I think that's kind of the main issue of what really could happen is that if people, you know, with some degree of cleverness can see that there's an opportunity to capitalize on eligibility's, and whether your plan is successful or fails, either way, if it fails, of course, you have extra eligibility's and houses to sell. If it succeeds, then that could well be an entity that is sold as a higher value item to who knows what's next. And that's another thing too, you know, once a PD is in there, I understand that there can be amendments, major amendments, which can change the density or the borders or the purpose. So it just, to me, feels like it's really a case where the cart's ahead of the horse here and we're, you know, we're not questioning the need for it or the merit of it. But the first step is to look at, do we want to do anything that is going to make management of the rest of the county more difficult? And we've got names from people all over the county, not just our immediate area. So others are thinking about it too, how it would affect them. But basically, I think rather this has been covered. So that, oh, there was something in there about a commercial kitchen, that shows up in one of their documents, and that makes you wonder. There was another thing about taking in some outside counseling other than just residents, parenting classes and outside counseling's with non-residents. So I don't know if there's bigger plan of expanding this thing. We tried to research about Hope Harbor throughout the nation, and that, you know, Google or whatever, and that shows up in different locations. There's one that's under the same name, that's like eighty acres. So I don't know, and there really will be no way of knowing what the future is, whether it stays as it is and grows, or whether it goes to a different entity. But it still comes back to land use versus merit, and how is this going to affect what people ask for in the future? So we're not questioning the merit, it's just, you know, what kind of can of worms it opens. Though I guess about it.
Thank you, Tom. Are there any questions for Mr. Winterstein? At this time, anybody else that would like to speak against this project?
I'll be brief. I'm Ronald Johnson, I live at two five seven three two four sixty six Avenue Hartford. I live on the west side of Benton Township, and I'm a supervisor on the Benton Township Board. And the township board is concerned about these planned development deals. To me, you're making eligibility's out of thin air, and that's our concern, that this is going to happen in other townships around the county. Thank you.
Any questions for Ron? Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak? Good morning, Orin.
Greetings. Orin Sorenson, twenty five five oh four, four hundred and eighty fifth Avenue, Garrettson, South Dakota, five seven seven zero three zero. If you might, I have one question, and then I have some comments. This is, this isn't a, not in my backyard issue for me, because I live by Garrettson, but I know very well what backyard issues are with a hog confinement in the middle of my section. And so I think we need to speak out for all people across the county. And I want to remind everybody in presence that I'm a Christian too, and many of the opponents are Christians too. And we understand the need for facilities like this. I love young people, I was in the teaching business for thirty-one years and still volunteer coach today, and I truly love being around young people, and I applaud very, very much what you guys do. My opposition is not to what they want to do, my opposition is to the process and the location. And I don't intend to be mean to anybody, but sometimes we have to bring up the tough questions. The county commission and zoning boards have brought many big questions all the time about, you know, can I develop this? One was over near me, family wanted to have a place for weddings in the country. And it was denied. Well, tell, and I hear this is better in the country, well, how do you have a wedding in the country, in town? You can't, but it was denied. Many people have been denied, probably for good reasons, but it seems like here, are we bailing out a poor land investment by Har and Lemmy sometime in the past? And they're great people, I don't question that, to donate, but is there a tax incentive to donating land for this? Is there something in it for Har and Lemmy? Why don't we put this near a town? Garrettson's looking for development, we had to do an opt-out recently in our schools because we don't have development. We would love development in Garrettson. And I can only speak for myself and the people that I know, that we would love to have something like this come near our shores. Why should we open a Pandora's box of excuses looking for increased housing eligibility's? Put this where we already have enough housing eligibility's. We have zoning laws for a reason. One question I had as I was listening to this, instead of creating new housing eligibility's, was there an attempt made to go buy or purchase housing eligibility's from farmers in the nearby area? Maybe they'd be willing to, maybe they would not. Another question I would have would be, why don't we use up more existing eligibility's first? McCrossens was rezoned, I heard, in two thousand and eleven. They were in ahead before the zoning restrictions. Their sixty acres is now rezoned, and I guess that leads me to a question, I'd like somebody to answer that, not right now, but when I'm through, if you could please. I'm a big fan of McCrossens Boys Ranch, and I know that everything's not perfect there. In fact, you're going to hear maybe a story about that from another speaker. But I wonder how this, if McCrossens has given the blessing to this home. Another question I had was, why this location? I think that was answered. Another question that came up during the testimony is, who would be the oversight? I taught school for thirty-one years, and in education, we have many governing bodies. And I wonder if that should be a requirement first, no matter if it went in by my area, by Garrettson or whoever, where, is that we get the blessing from the state, whatever the governing boards are in education, because these people are of education age. The other question I had, if I can find it now, we have in the past, I've mentioned, not granted rezoning requests to other businesses. Some repair shops, one now was granted recently, I mentioned the wedding in the country one. I just wonder now if we're opening a Pandora's box, because as one of you mentioned yourselves, on my quarter section, I have four housing eligibility's, I'm very aware of the value of them. I guess that's all I have, but I want to tell you also that I speak for the Minnehaha County towns and townships. I share that, and also, I've been in contact with the State Association. That's their concern too, is the use of these eligibility's and granting of new ones. And I thought a good point was brought up earlier about the country roads. One of our biggest jobs as members of towns and townships, I am Palisade, people in Benton and every other township, you know, what about the extra traffic on their country roads? I wouldn't say that'd be an issue to kill a project, but it sure does have an impact on our country roads. But if somebody could answer me the question, most were just concerns, but I do have the one question about, does McCrossens give the blessings to this? Because I don't want to see the two, one hurt the other.
Anybody else against the project?
Go ahead, I would be happy to answer the McCrossens questions. We've all received emails, and it's in the packet of information that we have, is McCrossens does fully support this.
Anyone else, are there opponents that wants to speak?
I'm Derry Benson, I live at two five eight one nine, four hundred and sixty eighth Avenue. I'm about a mile from this project, and I just got one little tidbit. I don't live at my farm anymore, my farm is two miles north of the McCrossens Boys Ranch. And I have a safety concern, I guess, it probably covers about everybody because of the fact, roughly eight, nine years ago, I had a pickup in my yard, stolen out of my yard during the middle of the night. And as farmers, we have multiple vehicles sitting with keys in them at all times. We're not going to lock up everything every night, I mean, we got multiple employees in some cases, so nobody knows where the keys are. But anyway, I had a pickup stolen. It ends up, two runways from the Boys Ranch had taken that pickup. They drove roughly ten miles to the east of me toward the Garrettson area. Went out in the field, drove around, threw some fences, did a bunch of damage to my pickup. Eventually, they got stuck out in the field. And then they proceeded to take off walking north roughly a mile. And as it would turn out, they end up at Orin Sorenson Brothers' place, which was on military duty at the time, and got his pickup out of a shed. Long story short, they ended up in a lake in Minnesota. So I wonder, obviously, they're not great drivers. They're young people. And they do pose a risk on the road if they would. And I'm not saying that your kids may or may not run, you got security as best you can, I'm sure. But it is a possibility, so that is a safety aspect to take into consideration. That's all I have.
Any questions for Derry? Thank you. Anyone else that wants to speak against this project? Okay, I'm not seeing anybody move, so I will give the, um, project people, those in favor of this project, an opportunity to answer any of the questions that were posed.
Hello. Uh, my name is Cindy McHidrick. I'm the executive director at Hope Harbor. Uh, my address is six nine zero Maple Street, Wabashel, Minnesota, five six two nine three. So just to give you a little history of, or a little idea of, of my role in the ministry. We have site directors in each location that are in charge of what goes on at that site. So I was hired as this, as the director and marshal. And then once we expanded, um, we hired a site director in Winona. So I'm basically the site director and marshal, but I'm also the executive director that oversees the entire ministry. So once we have, um, our home up and running in this area, I will have oversight of that and we'll be spending time there and training and, and things like that. So I want to address a, a couple of things that were brought up by, um, I think it was Brian was the name of the first gentleman that spoke. He mentioned at least two or three times that we are a for-profit, um, organization, which is entirely not true. We are a nonprofit. We do, uh, ask that families pay tuition. Our tuition fee is three thousand dollars a month. However, um, we don't turn anybody, anybody away for inability to meet that. So part of my job, what I do, is I, um, sit down with parents and talk about, is three thousand dollars doable for you? If not, and that's a lot of money, so, I mean, nobody's going to argue that. If that is not doable for you, what can you commit to every month? So if it's two hundred and fifty dollars or a thousand dollars, I, I want to make sure that they can commit to that every month. And then we go out and find donors to make up that difference. I think Claudia mentioned when she was up here, our tuition is actually about twenty percent of our budget, the tuition that we bring in. It doesn't mean our tuition, our budget is three thousand dollars times six times twelve months. It means that amount that families are able to pay is about twenty percent of our budget. We, uh, we are just not for profit. So Brian, um, I don't know where you are. If you have any more questions on that or clarification, um, that, that's one thing I wanted to make sure of. The exit strategy was brought up, um, different times as well. At one point throughout this process, and I believe it was back when we were working with Lincoln County, that got brought up as a question. What would be your exit strategy if this doesn't work? I mean, if we don't have families coming to us, maybe there is no need. We don't believe that, obviously, or we wouldn't be doing that. But if we don't have any boys, there's no reason to have a home here. Again, we don't believe that. But if that happens, what are we going to do? We're going to have these houses. What are we going to do with them? And so that's where we talked about what would we do? We would probably sell off the houses. There is no ulterior motive of, ooh, let's get this done, let's build these houses, let's sell them off, and that's a way for Hope Harbor to make money. We approached, um, the Har family about this property. They didn't approach us about it. I can't necessarily speak for them, but I really believe that they don't have an ulterior motive of what kind of benefit am I going to get for this? And that was brought up. At the first neighborhood we had, neighborhood meeting we had back in December, Brian mentioned something about us saying we would have commercial activity at that corner. As I recall, and, and anybody can correct me if I'm wrong on this, they can come up. As I recall, the comment to that was, you don't have any idea what maybe someday could be on this corner. Wouldn't you prefer something like Hope Harbor is there versus a gas station? And that's how I remember that comment about potentially commercial property on that corner. Dave, when he came up, um, commented on how we can't, um, base decisions on fear. And again, that's just a lot of what I heard from different people that were coming up this morning. It got brought up with the gentleman who had his, uh, his pickup stolen. Can we say a hundred percent that's not going to happen, that a boy's not going to run away? No. Can we say there's, with a hundred percent certainty, there's a boy in Crooks who someday might go steal a truck and drive it off? No, we can't. Are our boys maybe at a little bit more at risk than other boys? Maybe. But what I'd like people to understand is, um, it's a voluntary placement that's been talked about. Kids, to some extent, have to agree to be there. If we're going to have a boy there or a girl in our marshal or Winona, Winona home, who absolutely are not going to want to do our program, we won't keep them. You know, we, the, the kids are, they're there because they know they need some help. They're not, are they happy about it? No. What teenager's going to be super excited about going away for a year, leaving their friends, only seeing family on weekends, giving up their cell phones and their, all their social media and things like that? They're not super a hundred percent happy about being there, but they have to some extent agree to be there. They have to agree with us that they need some help. It's a team decision in that interview. Ultimately, parents make the decision. But again, if the teen is absolutely not going to want to be there and they're going to be running away, we're not going to take them there. It just doesn't fit with what we do. It's very much of a family atmosphere and it, and it just, it doesn't work. I mean, we'll find out in a big hurry, um, because they won't be following the program and then they can't be there if they're not following the program. Tom mentioned, are there other areas, maybe? I mean, you know, I, I brought this up at the first neighborhood meeting. You know, we were at Lincoln County and, you know, believe in your program just somewhere else. And, um, I love the idea, uh, Ron, uh, Orin, I think it was, talked about Garrettson would love to have you. I, I love to hear that. I'm just not so sure, you know, once we got in there and really started talking to people. And again, that comes back to the fear, so I just wanted to address those things. Any questions?
Any questions for Cindy?
Okay.
Anyone else that wants to answer any questions? Thank you, Mr.? Mr. Lemmy?
Cindy and I are constantly bumping into each other. I just want to clarify something too in the exit strategy. Kent Hueskin and I met with, um, Kevin, um, prior to even our first neighborhood meeting. And that is where the exit strategy came in. Kevin said, we need to have an exit strategy. I agree with Cindy in that we're going to build one house. If one house fails, we're not going to build two more houses. You know, we are, I mean, we are fiscally, we are a fiscally responsible organization. We, there is no benefit to building additional houses if there, there is not a need. So if we need an exit strategy, we're probably going to know that after we build one house. We're not going to invest a million dollars or five hundred thousand dollars to build another house. However, we were told that we needed to have something in place prior to, to that, and I wanted to address that. As far as the outbuilding, having a commercial kitchen, the reason we, we had that in there was simply because in the event we do grow and have three houses, it would be nice to be able to have a centralized kitchen. We are not putting a commercial kitchen in. We're only going to wire it and plumb it should the need arise to have a commercial kitchen so we can prepare more meals, uh, at that time. As far as the outbuilding, having sleeping quarters, yes, we would like to have a loft area where staff can spend the night if there's inclement weather, et cetera. But it does not, it is not a full apartment by any means. The kitchen is not, it would just simply be an efficiency equipment. And all three outbuildings, if in fact we would choose to build all three outbuildings, would have a different purpose. The question about the oil change and what are we going to do with the oil? I only propose that as a possibility of something that we may do. I'm not, I, I don't, programmatically, I leave that to the decision of the team that is running the house, the, the staff that is working in the house. What is appropriate? Are we going to give these boys a bunch of saws and ask them to go cut? Absolutely not. We have, whether, regardless of how we're governed in the state of, of South Dakota, we have a sense of responsibility to the safety and well-being of the environment and of our stu, of, of the residents we serve. We are not going to go haphazardly and do things unprofessionally. We have operated in Minnesota for tw- thirteen years. We have never had an extreme violation of any of the laws or regulations or licensing requirements, any major injuries, any of those things that would cause for a great, a great deal of alarm. Yes, we've had girls leave the property. Yes, they've come back. Yes, we've found other placements for them if they refuse to stay in the property. But we, we are, I, I, I get the sense that we're just kind of a haphazard, the, the neighbors are saying this, haphazard organization that has no idea what we're doing. Just because we're doing boys, it's not significantly different. Kids are kids. They need love, they need acceptance, they need to be given coping skills to deal with the issues that they're dealing with. And, and we believe that we can do that. And I resent the fact that we would be, that it's felt by this, or this group, that we would be irresponsible in any way, shape, or form. If we do an oil change, if we teach boys how to change oil, we're not going to go dump the oil in the creek. We're going to follow proper procedures. And, and so some of those things just, I just, I just needed to, to share my heart on that. And, you know, I'm one of those parents who couldn't find a placement for my daughter when I needed it, because there was nothing available. So this comes to me, this, this comes from the very deep recesses of my heart, a, a call on my life to help families. For fifteen years, I have volunteered every penny of my time, every, every bit of my time, and not one single cent of money has come to me for, for what I have done in this organization. So to, to imply that this is all about for profit and how we want to milk the society to, to gain money is very offensive to me. So thank you for hearing my heart on that.
Thank you, Mrs. Kinsley.
Dan Lemmy again from Madison. The property is owned by Crooks Development LLC. That is the, um, organ, or that's the company that bought the property with the intention of developing it. Then, since then, when we were turned down, the property, uh, was purchased by Jack Har and put into the Har Family Trust. So at the point that this would be, uh, become approved, would be the point that the, the, uh, property ownership would transfer to Hope Harbor. Jack Har was my partner, was my friend. Like I stated earlier, you don't know how much Jack has given that, that hasn't been publicly, doesn't have Sanford name on it, okay? Jack did so many things privately. And to come back and, uh, accuse that family of trying to profit off of this is, is very offensive to me because I know their heart. Jack and his trust, uh, stated that all of his assets, all of his wealth must be given away before his wife passed away. This is not public knowledge, and I shouldn't even be bringing this up. But again, when you attack somebody for trying to do good, um, he's giving away, or the trust is giving away everything. Not just a percentage or anything else, everything. So there's an old saying, it says, no good deed goes unpunished. I hope this straightens out some of that, so.
Okay. Nobody else from the proponent's side? I guess we will close testimony and we will go back to the commission at this point. So any questions that you would have for anyone that has spoken or comments?
This is never an easy decision. I know, I appreciate everybody who has come and has told us their stories and their opinions and, and, and their hearts. Because it is hard, it's also hard for us. And what's, what we were elected for was to do the hard jobs and we need to follow what the ordinances are of our county. And that is, I think, what we're here to do today. And whether, I, I assume we're making a decision, but there's a possibility of deferring it, um, till Commissioner Barth is back. So, um, I guess we'll just kind of see where conversation goes, so. Commissioner Karski?
No questions for everybody, or anybody, but I do want to thank everybody. I know I talked to a commissioner from Lincoln County that asked him what was the tone of the conversation there. And I'm, I'm happy that this conversation was a lot, I think, more civil from what I heard from down there, so appreciated that. We stuck to, you know, what, what we're doing and what we have to work with, so it is greatly appreciated. I don't think anybody, from what I've heard, really questions, um, you know, the mission of Hope Harbor. And we all are very respectful of what you do and, um, thank you for doing what you do, so. My intent was, because Commissioner Hyburger was going to be absent today, to, um, make a motion to defer till next week when we had a, when we would have all five commissioners here. And, and the reasons for that are, are numerous and mostly comes down to quorum and number of votes and that type of thing. And, um, I'm still going to make that motion. It'll be if somebody wants to second it to continue that, that's great. And if it dies for lack of a second, I'm fine with voting on this today also. So that would be my motion, would be that we defer, I think we have all five commissioners here next Tuesday, to defer till February twenty eighth, twenty, twenty-seventh? Twenty-seventh.
We were all thinking that Commissioner Hyburger was going to be gone today until, uh, yesterday. And so, um, you know, this is, this is an important issue. You guys, all of your presence here shows that it's very important to all of you. And, um, I, I think I would be inclined to second that motion because I, I think it's important that all the commissioners have an opportunity to, to vote on this.
I don't like deferring anything. I told a commissioner that I would consider that if there was only three of us, but because there's four, I'm not sure that I want to do that because I don't want to waste people's time and have them come back next week. I, uh, think I would like to know where everybody's at, to be honest. I know where I'm at, at this point. So I'm probably not going to support a deferral.
I'm afraid I'm kind of in the same camp, that I think that we should have a discussion and see if we think that we need to have a deferral before we defer because, um, it's, it's these people's time too. And they've just sat here for, um, we've been doing this almost two hours, not quite, um, almost two hours. And, and I think that some discussion is, is our responsibility to these people and we'll just see where it goes from there. But if you would like a vote, I can take a vote.
I, I'd like to withdraw my motion.
Okay.
I draw your second.
Draw my second, yes, absolutely. Oh, that's great.
Commissioner Karski?
Okay, to, just to start the discussion, I guess. And when we heard, had the first reading on this, I asked, um, Kevin for a copy of our Plan Development District statutes or ordinance just because I wanted to read to see what they said. And, and they're, they're pretty black and white in my mind. We talk about intent and what is, what is not the intent. And, um, there's seven subparagaphs, A through G, on what is the intent of a planned development. And I, I think this is missing on at least four of them. And it says, a planned and coordinated mix of land uses which are compatible and harmonious. I think we missed there. Encourage the redevelopment of contiguous large lot parcels into an integrated and orderly subdivision pattern. Obviously, this could be not considered, in my perspective, a large lot. And this was brought up and this has, um, to do with, you know, the country setting, preserve the unique and natural features such as woodlands, wetlands, natural drainage systems and scenic areas. I think we're missing on that. And then protect sensitive areas with restrictive soil conditions with development areas through clustering of uses on land more suited for building. A good chunk of this is flood, um, in the flood zone. We think the big thing is that it's not the intent of the Plan Development District to accommodate or encourage the development of isolated small tracts where adjoining parcels are not considered with an overall development scheme. This is, goes against the intent of the way I'm interpreting our Plan Development District and what they should be used for. Has nothing to do with who the tenant is or, or who the final occupant will be or the landowner. or the landowner. I, I think this just goes against the tenants of our planned development district and our ordinance. So I, based on that, I cannot support this. And, and this goes back to the first reading, you know, just wanting to know what this comes from and what this is about. Zoning laws are meant to give people reassurance that we are going to have a comprehensive plan, and that we don't have spot zoning, that we don't have sprawl, and that type of thing. And we need to protect the, you know, the rural nature of, of that, of these properties, and, and I don't think that we're doing that by permitting this.
Commissioner Bendega? Kevin, I would ask you to comment on that, because those were not included in our packet, even though we asked about that. So I would, I would ask you to comment on Commissioner Karski's comments.
Sure. So as he just read, and maybe I can get it out of the book here. The planned development zoning district is intended for, for large groups, large lots. There's been several planned developments in the area of recent that have been in front of you. One by Wall Lake that was recently denied, that was eighty acres. As if you can recall, it had residential and commercial aspects of that. Planned development by a north of Renner that was approved, that had a residential and a horse-riding arena. And then there was a planned development recently approved for a ten-acre parcel, or I think about a ten, ten-acre parcel, for, to allow horse barn, because the property as it states was allowed, was no longer conforming property. It was a ten-acre property with an ag building, that if it blew over, it would not be able to be rebuilt. So the, decided that the way to make it conforming was to rezone it to this planned development. So yeah, there are the, the aspects that Dean just read, and you can take those into consideration as the intent of the ordinance, and there are also, also aspects that the planned development district has been approved for and not approved for similar reasons. So I guess it's up to the commission to make that decision if, if the planned development meets the comprehensive plan, or if they are going to take the intent into consideration, they're, they're all in consideration, I guess.
I think we should all have a copy of that, or you can pass it down. Commissioner Bendega, do you have additional comments?
I'm curious, I mean, your office recommended approval. The planning commission ultimately on a close vote, recommended approval. I'm curious if you could just go through your thinking on, on why you recommended approval. Just, I know you probably did that earlier, but if you could just restate.
Sure. Part of the reason why I, as a planner, recommended approval was the institutional aspect of the property. If this, first, if it was a school, just a blanket school, it would be a permitted use. If it was a, a church, just a church, they can get a building permit the next week, and we'd be able to start building a church. Those uses are allowed in the ag district. As I mentioned earlier, the group home, even if they were to have residential dwellings or building eligibility, there's no other way to have a group home in the agricultural district. So this was the route that was taken by staff or presented to the petitioner to, to allow it in this location, because they had the location, and they wanted us to propose a method of, of how they can propose it to the commission to get it approved. The other part, aspect of it is, it is within approximately half mile from Crooks. This is an area that, although it is surrounded by agriculture, it is unlikely that a large-scale dairy will pop up in this area, because it's going to be in the growth boundaries of Crooks, are going to be very close to Crooks. Agriculture will eventually be moved out as Crooks grows out towards this area. It may be forty years, but that's part of the aspect, as well as planning for that.
Commissioner Bendega?
So just to put a follow-up to that, because a lot of the focus of the conversation, particularly by the opponents, is, is on this whole issue of housing eligibility's and the, the exit strategy and, and those things. So I'm curious how that comes into play in your analysis.
Well, with any rezoning, like I said, I said earlier, typically with rezoning, eligibility's, if there are eligibility's on the property, in this case, they aren't on the thirteen acres that's being proposed, but if there were eligibility's there, the eligibility's would be void, because it's going to then take into whatever regulations that are allowed in the zoning district proposed. So in this case, the proposed zoning district allows three eligibility's, and as brought up earlier, three accessory dwellings with those eligibility's. So they'd be able to allow, I suppose, if you wanted to count that, then six, but one would be accessory to the main. Lost my train of thought, was, your question was, how does the eligibility's work, or?
Well, I just was curious. The whole, the whole focus of a, a lot of the concern that I heard was about the exit strategy and the fact that you're creating three housing eligibility's. I mean, really focused much more on, not, much less on the institutional use and much more on the potential housing use of this.
I suppose, as this is an ordinance and a planned development, right now is the permitted use allows a single-family dwelling and a group home, you may be inclined to allow just a group home. And then if it goes defunct, they'd have to remove the, the dwellings, that would be a possibility, and rezone it back, i- if they're going to put any other, or have a major amendment, which would go in front of you again, as part of the solution to that.
So that's a possibility, that we could support this with the, the requirement that it only be approved as a, as a group home and, and basically remove the exit strategy.
So then what you would do is you would say, "Use is permitted," and you'd just strike out use A, that which says, "Single-family dwellings not to exceed one per acre."
Well, since I painfully made everybody stay longer by not deferring this, I'm going to give you my personal perspective and my, hopefully, county commission perspective on this. First of all, I don't think anybody ever goes into a, and I have to tell you, I have to be, full disclosure, I'm the president of, president of a large nonprofit group. So I have thirty years of experience of going through this. Nobody goes into a plan like this with the opportunity to fail. The best thing that could ever happen is there's no need, and that's never going to happen. Their mission's pretty solid, and the growth that our county has seen over the last six years I've been on the county commission, and the growth of public safety-related issues, there's a significant need for this. And frankly, nonprofits can do it cheaper than government can do it. That's a proven fact. Secondly, the exit strategy comments, I think, are frankly uninformed questions, because number one, most large donors and people who are going to be donors will ask, "If this doesn't work, what are you going to do with my ownership in that project?" And the response would probably be, we'd end up selling the buildings to a private organization or a private person to be able to live there. Secondly, there is never a guaranteed success. I mean, there's no guarantee successes in for-profit business or nonprofit businesses or gifts that Denny Sanford made. That is not going to happen. The other thing that I'm, I'm going to have to say this, and the people I work with may can me by the time I get home, you know, I've, I've worked with the older adult population, and when I ask them about change, nobody really wants change. But tell me one thing that hasn't changed in our lifetimes. I just need one. I've never heard one. Everything changes. So to say that I've lived here for a hundred years gives me the right to make it that way for the next hundred is not accurate. I don't agree with that. Secondly, I think there's opportunities here to qualify this a little bit for some of the concerns I've heard. Second, the first thing would be, we put into our requirements that to be able to build this, they get a certificate for a floodplain construction project. And my guess is, is after the engineer gets done with that floodplain, that floodplain will go from very blue to a very small creek, because that's the history of it. Secondly, they get a percolation septic tank test, so there's no septic tank problem, no concerns about the creek being flooded. The last thing, I think, is a difficult one, but we can put something in there to the effect that if the state of South Dakota, through the Department of Social Services, decides to license these group homes, that they obtain a license within a certain period of time, and they maintain that license. Those are just acceptable practices in change, if you will, that will make this project work. The whole issue of, and I had to giggle, and I apologize for that, of somebody getting their pickup stolen. I live in the middle of Sioux Falls. In the last year, my neighbor across the street has a, let's just say, an older adult child who's been picked up and taken to jail three times. There's no guarantees, and that was a change in the neighborhood. So if you think you're going to prevent pickups from being stolen, and you're going to prevent something from happening that's negative, again, tell me what hasn't changed in the last fifty years. Neighborhoods change, people change, environments change, everybody changes. And the only way we're going to solve problems is to handle some of the things that Hope Harbor is doing in a different way. I certainly applaud their guts, frankly, to come here and stand up in front of the people who don't like change, to be able to give us a better alternative than what we've had in the past, because we're building a forty-six million dollar jail next month, and it's because we can't change the judicial system. The end of my sermon.
Commissioner?
Oh, I, I mean, I can go ahead and add on that. You haven't had an opportunity to weigh in, weigh in, so you.
I will.
Okay. I mean, I, I, I agree with all of those things. I really have struggled with this whole issue of, you know, not being contiguous, and I recognize that the project that we did north of Renner was not, in my mind, contiguous. It was, but it was a, it was an area that was moving towards much more residential feel, much more, you know, you could see a lot of rooftops when you're up there. And here, you know, I, I don't doubt that Crooks is going to move that, that way. I mean, there's just no doubt in my mind that that's what's going to happen, and I don't know if it's going to be, you know, two years, ten years, but I mean, that's what's going to happen. That's just the way the, the growth of the county is going. And so I'm less concerned about the, the spot zoning for that reason alone. I recognize what Commissioner Karski's saying. I, I don't necessarily agree with some of the other positions that, the reasons that Commissioner Karski talked about. I mean, I think certainly that the, the whole floodzone issue can be addressed, much in the way that Commissioner Bendega talked about. And that, you know, the, the structures and, and the focus, I mean, I, I agree, nobody goes in to fail, but, you know, we all are, you know, we, we all are trying to think through exit strategy and, and in, I think if this was less likely to present itself as three very nice residential homes, I, I'm not sure that we'd have this conversation if what was coming before us was a planned development for three residential homes. I think that would not have garnered nearly this kind of discussion. And so that, that I have struggled with a little bit, but I'm, I share Commissioner Bendega's passion for needing and wanting to do whatever we can do to support interventions with citizens, with kids in Minnehaha County in particular, because when you look at our jail population, there are a whole lot of, what I would view kids. I mean, there's a lot of eighteen to, you know, twenty-nine-year-olds there, and, and whatever we can do to provide early interventions, particularly here, early interventions that don't require taxpayer dollars, because we could not afford to put kids in a whole year-long program. I mean, we just don't have the resources to do that. And so I think that I'm, I'm very, and I, I don't think there's anybody in this room that's not supportive of the idea and of the program. Honestly, I didn't hear anybody say that. I think that, but it's just, there is a lot of, "Not here, why not somewhere else?" I heard that a lot. But the thing that I am struggling with the most is this three housing eligibility issue. So, so I mean, in some respects, I can understand why donors might be concerned, but it's, you know, also, it's kind of a higher bet that Hope Harbor would be placing that if there wasn't an exit strategy for the single-family dwellings and they had to come back to us, that gives us some opportunities to control the process at that point, so.
Okay, I guess I get to weigh in. And most of the people in this room, I know, because this is my neighborhood, and so that's made it really hard for me. I talked to a few people, I talked to Tom on the phone for probably forty-five minutes, we talked about kids, and our grandkids, and a lot of other things too, and I also talked to Derry. And so I've grown up in this neighborhood, I've also had a vehicle stolen by kids from McCrossan's, but I have also had a vehicle stolen by, off of our property that belonged to someone else, by kids that weren't McCrossan's, so it can happen to anybody. I, I felt like I needed to come down more on, you know, what the county would allow in my decision. There's one building eligibility that's owned by Hare. If Hare gave that building eligibility to Hope Harbor, they could build this house, we wouldn't even be having this meeting. They could build it, and they could legally run their pro, their program, there'd be no regulation of the county, because they can have six kids there. And I've gone through these questions, they can already do this. You guys wouldn't even have an input in it, at least by, by them doing a planned development, where they've come to us and they said, "We only want to build one house, possibly three." We can put restrictions on it and regulate the way we want it, instead of, they could say, "Okay, we're going to, Hare's going to give them this one, and they're going to build one here, and then they're going to go a half a mile down the road, and they're going to buy another building eligibility, and they're going to build another one there, and then they're going to go a mile down, and they're going to build another one there, and they can have six kids legally in every one of those houses, so, that are not blood relatives." So we could have the same thing around Crooks, but all around Crooks. Planned developments, I struggled with these a lot when we did the one over by Renner, a lot, because I'm the same with you guys. I own building eligibility's, I know the value of a building eligibility, because I own, I think, three. So I think about that, too. But planning impressed upon me repeatedly with the Renner one, that a building eligibility, or a planned development is different than a building eligibility, and it's an area, and it's, and so you can't talk about building eligibility. I had a really hard time with that. And I get it, because I own three building eligibility's. And I also had to think personally, would I want them across the street from me? Well, I think I'd rather have them than a gas station, I'd rather have them than a CAFO, I'd rather have them than, you know, so this has been really hard for me, because these people are my friends, and I don't want to have angry neighbors. But I was elected to do what I feel like the ordinance already tells me to do and how the county regulates, and so I will support it. I think that they're going to put one building there, and they wouldn't build a second one without knowing that it was to succeed, and so we're not going to have it divided. Oh, another point I wanted to make, as far as accessory buildings, in this, regulations, we've set a, a size of, of building. If they want a bigger building, Hare could say, "Oh, we're going to give you forty acres, we can run it right down that waterway, give you forty acres." They can build whatever size building on there they want, and now, and as many as they want, because as a farmer, you can put as many buildings on as you want and as big as you want. So if they have forty or forty-one acres, they can put a whole lot more buildings on there. They'd only get the one building eligibility, but... They'd only get the one building eligibility, but I'm just saying, there's, this could go a whole different way that we wouldn't even have any say about. So that's my piece, which isn't fun, so.
Roll call vote?
Yeah. Are you ready for a vote?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, roll call vote.
Bender? Can I ask a question? Point of order, please. So are we amending it to include any of these other requirements that Commissioner Bender, Benega mentioned? Is there any interest in, to withdrawing the 1A, the single-family dwelling?
I would be happy to, but I'd be happy to hear from Commissioner Karski first.
I didn't think that most of the question on the amendments, for example, making sure that it complies with flood and that type of thing are necessary, or if they, you know, for example, a state organization requires that they become licensed or certified, I mean, that's beyond us. They're going to have to do that whether we amend this or not, so I don't know if it's necessary to put those types of amendments in there. I mean, I can see the percolation test for a septic system. If, I have no idea what that means, I don't have a septic system, thank God, so I, so if, I mean, if that should be a requirement, we can, you know, that one I may understand, but I didn't quite understand the other ones.
I think that's required, I think that's already required by law.
Well, it is, both the floodplain development and the septic permit will be required to have a percolation test, so.
My only other comment, and I don't, I'm not hung up on this by any stretch, is if the Department of Social Services decides to license this group home concept, which I think they would, although I hate government regulations, I really think that we can ask them to comply with that.
You could, I would put that in the amendment of, so if you do 1B and just say, social services license group home or something to that effect as part of the requirement of the...
And I'm not a hundred percent sure. It's always going to be the Department of Social Services, because that just got changed again.
Sure, or state license.
We can say state licensing period.
And is, do we know that, I'm sorry, when you were giving your speech earlier, your sermon earlier, did you say that, did you say in that point that if those licensures were available, they would need to comply within a year? I just want to make sure it's written and they're right, because if we say they have to have it and we don't even have one in the state of South Dakota, we've just put a nail in the car.
No, if they have the license. I think that's what I said in my speech.
In your speech, in your sermon. We don't have, we don't have a motion, so before we can even think about roll call, we have to have a motion, so.
Go ahead. So I'll move to approve. And then we second then amend, or?
I think the motion should include the amendments.
Yeah, yeah, the motion includes everything when we have a motion, so.
I will make the motion, if you don't mind, that we approve this with the, if state regulations require a certification in this program or a licensure, that they obtain that within one year.
Motion to approve.
Can I note that, well, maybe perhaps put that under number six, other regulations? So it'll be like six D.
That's a good suggestion.
Is there anything else on that? We have a motion to approve with the stated amendment about state regulations or licensers. We want a roll call vote still?
Please.
Yep.
Bender?
Yes.
Benega?
Yes.
Karski?
No.
Hiberger?
Yes. Motion passes three to one. So, thanks, Kevin. Thank you for coming and giving us your time, and we'll see where it goes from here. Item number twelve is authorize the chairman to sign the amendment number one to professional services agreement between Minnehaha County and the Infrastructure Design Group, Inc. for preliminary engineering on Highway one forty-six and one oh-three. Carol Mueller.
Good morning, Commissioners Carol Mueller, Commission Office. Normally you would see DJ Beatty up here, but they have a snow event that happened in the county, so they are very busy moving snow this morning. The county entered into an agreement on December sixth, two thousand sixteen, with Infrastructure Design Group for Professional Services to conduct preliminary engineering on County Highway one forty-six, which would be east of South Dakota Highway eleven all the way to the state line, and also County Highway one oh-three, which would be south of Valley Springs to Highway one forty-six. They are proposing to amend this agreement, which is a decrease because of, as you get into a project, you continue to, to learn things. And what they discovered is that over sixty percent of the route's vertical alignment does not meet design standards for a fifty-five mile an hour highway, and the centerline alignment is not centered on the middle of the road. So they want to take more time to go through and work on this and recognize that they need to reprogram this segment for a reconstruction project within four to eight years. This is a decrease of seven thousand eighty dollars.
Any questions for Carol?
Rule, second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number thirteen is authorize the chairman to sign an agreement between Open Lattice, Inc. and Minnehaha County for pretrial case management systems software. I'm not sure if we have Carol or Erin this morning.
Erin's here.
Erin's here, sorry. We really know how to clear a room, you guys.
They got lonely in here.
Wow.
Thanks, Karen.
There she runs.
Good morning. There's a little bit of a lag when we were watching it in our office. Erin Sersky, Minnehaha County Commission Office. I'm here today to ask permission, or for the chair to sign a contract with Open Lattice, which is a software company that will provide our case management system for our pretrial services. The total contract will be for eleven thousand one hundred, which is one hundred and eighty-five dollars per month per user. The contract, the twelve months will begin as soon as we are using it operationally with pretrial and continue for twelve months after that. This software will be able, allowed to bring in information from the courts and local law enforcement to be able to do and execute the function of pretrial very efficiently. So, any that, any questions?
Questions for Erin?
Question is, Erin, is this part of the grant reimbursement?
Nope. Nope, this one is not. The PSA tool, that pretrial tool, the Arnold Foundation is funding them building that for our use, so that's being built, we're already, we're testing that right now. This is for, this includes not just the case management piece of the pretrial operations, but also a call-in reminder system, so it has voice recognition. So it's a technology-based check-in program for folks in pretrial, and the court reminder system, which can be either via text or telephone call. So it includes not just the case management, but also those two options we want to develop.
Commissioner Bender?
And Erin, would it be accurate to say that this will be really helpful in helping to keep our staffing costs down, because it will automate a lot of the functions for pretrial?
Yes, that is correct. Since we are building the interface with the court system, we'll be able to auto-populate court dates for court reminders, be able to auto-populate any other demographic and other information we have, so that way our staff aren't re-entering information that's already entered. So it will not only be more efficient for FTE time, but also help with the quality assurance pieces to make sure, cut down on that human error and data entry piece.
And to approve?
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Next we have Craig, item number fourteen, legislative update.
Good morning. Craig Dewey, Commission Office. Legislature is nearing the tail end of a number of days. I think we're at day twenty-six or so right now out of thirty-eight day session here. Crossover day is approaching next week. Just a few items to go over. We're still awaiting a hearing date for Senate Bill eighty-six in regards to selling surplus property. House Bill ten seventy-six was one of the items that the commission approved a resolution in support of earlier. That bill has passed both chambers and is now awaiting the governor's signature. A couple of other items, later this week, Commissioner Hiberger will be testifying in front of the House Tax Committee on House Bill twelve ninety-four and House Bill thirteen oh-eight in regards to increases on alcohol taxes. If you do have any other questions regarding any piece of legislation on this memo or other bills, I'd be happy to answer those questions.
Any questions? So I'll be going to pier tomorrow, weather permitting.
I will second that. I was wanting to leave yesterday, that obviously didn't happen, and we'll see if I'm able to leave today or not. If not, I guess we'll both be driving up tomorrow.
That'd be just great, then I want to go along, so. Any questions? Okay, we'll move on to item number fifteen, which is Minnehaha County Liaison Reports. Commissioner Karski?
Commissioner Bender and I met with our Public Defender's Office. We have the PDO Board this morning, and just kind of make you aware of some of the things that are happening in the Public Defender's Office. Currently, Tracy Smith, our Public Defender Department head, or lead, I guess, I'm not too sure what her full title is, spends about twenty hours a week doing what are called mental health commitments, and I mean, that's, that's a large burden and it really takes away from her true expertise in what she does and her years of experience, so we're trying to find ways maybe that we could free her up on twenty hours a week so that she would have more time to do what we truly need her to do on the higher, the cases that need more expertise of her level, I guess. Currently, we have four public defenders that are able to handle murder trials, take what's called the lead seat, and they can each handle two cases at one time. We have nine open murder trials currently pending. The cost for outside counsel for a murder trial is somewhere in that hundred to one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar range, and that's a conservative estimate, I think, Commissioner Bender?
I think that's what we decided.
Yeah. So, you know, the request is being made through the, our Board to ask for outside counsel for at least one murder trial that's currently pending. It's just where we're at. We had one already in the last year that we had to do the same thing on. So we're looking for ways to free up more of our staff time and maybe handle some of the smaller stuff. We've got a few other things, like last week we did the request for proposals for, I'm sorry? Yeah, for conflict attorneys, yep, yep, so. So we have, there's, it's, it's, as we're aware, it doesn't matter the state's attorney, the public defender, the public advocate, it is one of our largest challenges that we face in public safety and one of our, one of our budget busters, quite honestly, so.
additional liaison reports? Okay. Is there any new business? Any old business? I guess I look for motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned at eleven...